My name is Mark Tisdale. I'm the interim town manager. I've been the interim town manager for about four months now. Most of you may know me as the town engineer. I've worked in the engineering department for about seven years now. I've enjoyed working for the town of Stoughton. I want to thank you for tuning into this video for the town meeting article presentation. You may be asking, why are we preparing this video? And essentially, it's to, the goal of the video is to educate and inform the town meeting representatives and the town residents on the background and details of every article. There's been a lot of board of selectmen meetings, a lot of finance committee meetings. We know everybody has a busy schedule and you may not have been able to make those meetings or have seen them on TV. So this is to give you a little bit of background before town meeting. Hopefully, it helps make more of an efficient use of time. The video's set up, and the details of the video are that every department head that's doing an article will be presenting the article. They'll mention their name, the cost of the article, and give you some details and maybe some visuals on every article. The video will be available on the town website and through the SMAC website. We want to thank you for tuning into this video. As we all know, town meeting starts on May 7th at the high school auditorium. I welcome any questions you may have on the video. We hope you like it. Thank you.
Hello, town meeting representatives. I'm Bill Rowe, town accountant. We're going to go over a few articles today. Article 14 deals with a potential sanitation enterprise fund. This was proposed by the Board of Selectmen who felt that the sanitation function should operate as a distinct business-type fund rather than a governmental fund. This would be for fiscal 2020, so it would be July 1st, 2019. Has no effect on this year's budget. Revenues such as trash fees, recycling fees, and a share of investment income would be dedicated to that enterprise fund. Typical costs would include, obviously, the sanitation department, debt service on trucks such as rubbish packers, and the, what you know as the indirect costs, which would be your health insurance, a share of health insurance, pension, administrative costs paid by the general fund. This would, so I've done, again, this has no effect on the 2019 budget, but I've done like a pro forma budget as to what it might look like using this year's numbers, using the 19 numbers. So we have the salaries and expenses, the debt service, and the indirect costs, which will be totaled to roughly $2,402,152. The revenues, the trash fees, we're using the current year estimate that we use for the general fund. Interest and penalties, and other fees, recycling fees, would come to $1,680,340. So we're looking, we will be looking at probably a general fund subsidy of around $720,000 in the first year, fiscal 2020. And that is about it.
Chief McNamara from the Stoughton Police Department here to present the two capital items for the Stoughton Police Department in the May 2018 town meeting. First capital item is an article 17A, which is bullet-resistant vests. The Stoughton Police is looking to replace 51 ballistic-resistant vests for 51 officers, which expired in August of 2017. Currently, we have been awarded a roughly $20,000 grant from the federal government with regards to ballistic-resistant vests. The remainder of the money will be fronted with this article money to purchase the vests, and we already have, we will get $20,000 from the federal government. So we are looking to borrow $63,000 to purchase the 51 vests, $20,000 of which has been granted through a grant from the federal government, $20,444.27. Once we've purchased those vests in FY '19, we will then be able to submit for a grant through the Massachusetts Ballistic Resistant Vest Grant Funding. Also, that amount of money is unknown if we will get that money at that time. Again, 51 vests have already expired and in need of replacement. For a little background on a ballistic-resistant vest, they last, are only good for five years, and there is an expiration date on them. So we purchased in fiscal year 13, which was in the summer of 2012, the ballistic-resistant vests. So the majority of our department is expired at this time. We're looking to replace them with the approval of this grant money, this money. The second article, the second article within 17A is three marked cruisers. Currently, we have, we will be replacing two Chargers and one Ford Explorer if granted this article money. And we are looking for $175,000 to replace three cruisers, three marked cruisers. These cruisers will not be adding to the fleet. We will be taking existing marked cruisers from the fleet, and we will be replacing them with three marked cruisers if granted this money. We will be looking to take the last two Chargers and one Ford Explorer, which was purchased in 2015, in approximately a year from now, which would be after, in January '19, if granted their reapproval for three new cruisers. Over the last few years, we've purchased, when we've purchased new vehicles, we've purchased them at the beginning of the calendar year and then buying them in the second half of the fiscal year, which has worked out well for the department. Again, these will not be additional, but replacement cruisers for the Stoughton Police Department.
Hi, I'm Deputy Chief Scott Breen, Stoughton Fire Department. I'm here today to present capital budget requests for Article 17B. Our first request that we have put in, we were asked to put this article in, is for the emergency preemption traffic signal at Washington and Central Street. The cost of this article is $22,000, and what this does is it allows the fire apparatus to control the traffic signal when we're responding to a call. So this particular intersection is probably the most important to have this article, this signal device, because we come from 138 coming down Washington Street, and we're also coming up from Central Street from Station 2. So the potential of collisions is great. And what this does is it controls the signal, and it allows cars to get out of the way, and decreases anxiety for the drivers on the cars, so the apparatus can safely get through and get to the emergency call. And that is $22,000 for this article. The second article we have is a request to replace our ambulance. This would be our ambulance 2, replacing our 2007 ambulance 2, which has over 125,000 miles on it at this time. Costs is $310,000. We have a replacement policy and plan that the Board of Selectmen has endorsed, that we try to replace our front-running ambulances every three years, and then they cycle through, so it's a nine-year cycle. So we will have, it becomes the, after the second year, it becomes our ambulance, second ambulance out the door, and after six years, six to nine years, it becomes a reserve piece. Again, the price of that is $310,000. Our next request is for hydraulic rescue tools, commonly referred to as the jaws of life. These tools are over 10 years old. They are starting to fail. We are a very busy department. We've had the opportunity to use these tools frequently, and we have had issues on scene with the tools not working properly. So we're looking to get these replaced at a cost of $38,000. So hopefully, we will support that as well. Our last request is for a gear washer and drying system. Currently, we have, and the price for that is $20,000. Currently, we have a washing machine at Station 1 on Freeman Street that was installed by firefighters over 20 years ago, and it's served us well. However, we've never had the ability to dry our gear up until about three or four years ago, when we changed our heating system. We would use the boiler room to dry the gear with the radiant heat. Most studies out there now show the carcinogens that are in the firefighter gear causing many firefighters to come down with cancer. So we're hoping to get this new system, washer and dryer extractor, for the firefighters, for their safety, and it also extends the life of their firefighting gear, which the town purchased, I believe, two fiscal years ago. So it will increase the lifespan of the gear. Again, that was the estimated cost of $20,000.
Hello, Tom Fitzgerald, Public Works Superintendent. I'm here to speak on Article 17C, capital items for the Highway Department. We're asking for three items this year. One is to replace a 1987 chipper, a six-wheel dump truck with a plow, and a sidewalk tractor with ribbon blower and plow. Again, these are three articles, three items of equipment that we use daily. I'll go through a little bit with each one of them. Item C1 is to replace a 1987 chipper. Again, this is a 31-year-old brush chipper. Still runs, it's our backup chipper. It's not very reliable. It doesn't have some of the safety features that a newer machine would have. I think after 31 years, the town's got their money's worth, and it's time to upgrade. Again, this is our backup chipper. Our existing chipper would be moved down to the backup position, so we could have two chippers at all times to use. Next item is 17C2. I'm looking to replace a six-wheel dump truck. This particular unit's been out of service for two years. It's a 1988 International Dump Truck with plow. The replacement cost is $154,000. This is a truck that we used up till two years ago, when it was out of service for mechanical and safety reasons. It's a plow vehicle, and it's just a general-use highway truck that its current, its use before it went off of line was with the Highway Department towing the chipper around. And again, general-use vehicle, looking to replace that. Item 17C3, we're looking to replace a, actually, we're not looking to replace this sidewalk tractor, we're looking to add it to our existing fleet. It'll cost a $140,585. The town has four sidewalk routes that we plow every snowstorm. Our sidewalk tractors are getting up in age. I've never been able to send four tractors out in each route and have them come back and say, we're done. Typically, one or two of them break down during a storm. Our fleet is aging, and we're looking to add another one to that list of equipment to be a little more reliable. And that would bring us to 17D, the Water Department capital. We're asking for four items for the Water Department. One is a pickup truck with plow, a one-ton truck with a plow, rubber-tie backhoe, and a water service truck. And I'll go into each one of those in a little more detail. 17D1 is a pickup truck with plow. We're looking to replace this 1996 Chevy Tahoe that is at its end of its useful life. There's some mechanical issues with it. You'll still see that around town. We won't allow this town to leave, we won't allow this vehicle to leave town. What we're looking to do is replace it. It's daily use of the Water Department for transportation, for water operated to and from the water plants, out to job sites. It doesn't have a plow. We're planning on replacing it with a plow, so it'll also be available for snow removal duty in the wintertime. 17D2 is a one-ton dump truck, or one-ton truck with plow. Costs a $56,800. Again, we're replacing a 31-year-old vehicle, a 30-year-old vehicle that's at the end of its useful life. 17D3 is a rubber-tie backhoe. Replacement cost is $125,000. Currently, the Public Works Department has two backhoes in their inventory, rubber-tie backhoes. The CAT, which is a 1999, and our Highway Department backhoe, which is 1997. Again, very old vehicles. These are our two frontline machines. What I'm looking to do is replace this CAT backhoe with another CAT backhoe, move this down to the John Deere's position as a backup. Keep the third, the John Deere, as a backup that will be available for snow removal, but not relegated to day-to-day use. Both these machines have been very reliable. In the past, we've had some major repairs that we've performed, but at this point in time, I think it behooves the town to update, update this set of equipment with a modern machine. This CAT backhoe goes out daily to work on water, water lines, service issues. Again, it's a daily-use machine. Again, town's got their money's worth on these two. I think it's time to update and move forward. 17D4 is a water service truck. Many of you have seen this vehicle out in the streets. This is our water service truck. It is a vehicle that responds to any water main breaks, service breaks, hydrant repairs. Within this vehicle, there's a lot of different systems that are used in the daily operations for the water distribution crew. There's an air compressor built into it. There's two hydraulic systems that run pumps, tools, mechanics, and there's an electrical system in there. So it has everything that crew needs to respond to a water break or water emergency in this truck. Their current truck that's in service now is a 2002 International. Still has some useful life in it, but it's at the point where we need to think about replacing this. What I propose to do is buy a truck similar to this for the 156, and move this truck down the line into service at the Vehicle Maintenance Department. So we'll still have the truck within the department to use in the event we need a second truck, which that does happen occasionally, but it's at the point where it's time to That brings us to 17E Sewer Capital Department, Sewer Department capital. We're proposing a one-ton four-by-four truck with plow for $56,800. It's basically replacing this 2001 F-350 that is, again, at the end of its useful life. Similar truck, it'll have a plow as well, be available for daily use as well as snow removal.
My name is Joel Harding. I'm Director of Maintenance and Operations for the Stoughton Public Schools. I'm here to discuss Article 17F, four articles that the schools and towns submitted. First, Article Priority Number One is the replacement of the internal phone system for the town and school buildings. This article came out of discussions for the Stoughton High School Building Committee, and we were asked to present it to the town. The existing Comdial system no longer exists. There is no such company as Comdial anymore. All of our parts and pieces for the existing system are remanufactured when we have to do repairs and replacements. This is the internal system, the internal phone system and voicemail for, as I say, town and school buildings. In addition, the request for this article is $1,500,000, but Verizon has approached us saying that they are going to be replacing all of the copper lines coming into all the town and school buildings, and they may be able to provide some financial assistance for this article as well. The second portion of the article is for a vehicle replacement for the school department. Excuse me. We average replacing vehicles about every three years. This is for a pickup truck with a plow setup. The truck is used daily for food service deliveries, and then in the afternoon for an evening, afternoon and evening by the custodial teams. It's part of our snow removal fleet, and we have a total of five vehicles, including this one. The vehicle has, presently has 75,000 miles on it, but the undercarriage and body has begun to rot out. We are asking $45,000 for this article. Our third priority article is to replace the air conditioning system at the Daw Elementary School. The existing system is a combination of window units and centralized systems, two centralized systems. These systems were installed in 2004, approximately 14 years ago. The expected useful life for those systems is 10 to 12 years. This new AC system would add six classrooms to what is existing, what presently is air-conditioned. This is for a new program for kindergarten students who we are going to be having over the summer at the Daw School. We are attempting to do this as a 25A project, an energy efficiency project. If that meets that criteria, we will get rebates from our utilities. And the fourth and last item under our article is to upgrade the restrooms at the West Elementary School. This is, was part, was part of the first facility master plan. We've had numerous issues over the past few years with the plumbing in the floor and in the ground plumbing for these restrooms, and so we are asking to replace the plumbing, the fixtures, and bring the restrooms up to ADA compliance. And the requested amount for that is $1 million.
Hello there. Tim Davis from the Recreation Department. I'm here to talk about Article 17G in relation to the West School Athletic Complex varsity baseball field backstop replacement. This article is for the cost of $8,870, and the scope of this project will be to dismantle, remove, and then replace the backstop that is currently at the West School Complex's varsity baseball field. This is the field that the varsity players use. This is also the field that our community uses for public groups, private groups throughout the entire spring, summer, and fall. Again, with the $8,870, this will completely include the dismantling removal of all the current railing and chain link fabric. This will then have the contract, the contractor will then re-rail and rewire all new piping and chain link throughout the structure, and this will fit the current footprint that you see on the screen, so that it will not disrupt anything that abudes it or borders it. Why we are looking to do this, the current backstop is the original structure from 1989. It is the original structure that was built with the complex, when the baseball field was first built on those grounds. This project is being done in direct response to what we believe is a safety hazard. The chain link, as you can see on the screen, is rusted. It is bent and out of shape due to constant use, and the, we fear, excuse me, we fear that the public's physical contact with it will result in injury. Small patches have been made, and small fixes have been made along the bottom piece of it to address what is there on the ground level. However, the higher structures, the higher rail, and the higher chain link is now what is of concern for us. And our timeline for completion on this project will be this summer, the summer of 2018, before the school year begins of the next school year.
Okay, I'm Paul Jaffoon, Facilities Manager. I'd like to speak to you about Article 18, Town Buildings and Facilities Items. The cost of this article is $1.4 million, and these costs were derived from the Facilities Master Plan update of 2017 performed by DRA Architects. If we can go to the spreadsheet here, I'll give you just a quick synopsis of how we came up with the priorities. Within the, within the plan, the consultant, DRA Architects, listed each one of the items and gave them a condition. The ones in yellow are of the highest priority, need to be dealt with as soon as possible, all the way down to items that we would like to be corrected but may not have to and/or are grandfathered in. As you can see, there's a list of multiple items at multiple buildings, the largest cost of which pertains to Fire Station Number 1 at over $1 million. All of the rest of the miscellaneous items add up to about $400,000, and there you can see the $1.4 million cost associated with the article. And this spreadsheet, along with a few others, is also within your town meeting book. I'd like to just, if I could, share a few photos of the condition of some of our buildings for those of the town meeting members and the public who aren't quite sure the condition of some of these buildings, and maybe give you a better picture of, as to why we need to work on these items as soon as possible. So I'll talk a little bit more about the study that was done to get the, this article going, up and going for town meeting. The Facilities Master Plan Committee chaired by Mr. Richard Fitzgerald, town meeting rep, put, asked DRA, or asked a consult, asked for an RFP for a consultant to come in and re-study all of our buildings like we did in 2010. We went through that process, and the committee chose DRA again to conduct the second study, and here we are again. And as you can see, some of the photos may not even do justice to the necessity of some of the repairs, but it's just an attempt to show the public some of the condition, conditions of the buildings. So Article 18 has many buildings to consider. We'll go down the list here off the spreadsheet. Cedar Hill Golf Course, small amount, $12,000. Public Works Office Building, roughly $30,000. Public Works Garage, roughly $23,000. Fire Station 1, again, just over $1 million. Fire Station 2, roughly $133,000. The Lucius Clapp Building, roughly $63,000. The Police Station, $75,000, and Town Hall, about $40,000, all to which add up to the $1.4 million.
Mark Tisdale, the interim town manager. With me is Craig Horstfall, the interim town engineer. We're presenting Article 19 today. It's a transportation analysis for Tosca Drive, Central Street, and Canton Street. Most of these articles were drafted by me when I was the town engineer about three, four months ago, and Craig has pleasantly taken on the role of interim town engineer. I thank him very much for helping out with that role, and he's been doing a great job. So with that said, I'll hand it over to Craig to present the article.
Thanks, Mark. This is Article 19, Transportation Analysis for Tosca, Central and Canton Street Intersection. This article is for $275,000 to generate design plans for the signalization of this intersection. Previous town meeting article had approved funds to generate the 25% design plans, and this article will bring those 25% design plans all the way to 100% design plans, along with construction specification and some construction oversight. Here's an aerial shot of the intersection. You can see the poor geometry and alignment of the roadways, which is leading to a lot of problems in the area with traffic. of problems in the area with traffic. This is a concept plan that was generated with the 25% design plan town meeting article. So as you can see here, there's some realignment of the roadways, restriping of the lanes, and a signal at the intersection of Tosca Drive and Central and Canton Street.
I'd like to just add in a couple of points, a little bit of history to this. As we all know, the recent development down the street in this area, Taj Estates across from the school, part of their condition of their comprehensive permit was to dedicate $100,000 to design improvements of this intersection. We have not received that money yet, but we expect within the next couple of months prior to an occupancy permit that that money will be delivered to the town. So that money will essentially come off the top of the requested $275,000 in funds.
Yeah, so as we had stated, the funds requested are $275,000. That's for design plan specifications and construction oversight, not for the actual construction dollars. This project is on the state's TIP program. So that's the Transportation Improvement Program, which will pay for the construction. So the town's part is to pay for the design. So we're requesting the funds from the town to advance the project to the 100% design phase and be ready for the state dollars for the construction.
Just to kind of build on what Craig said, so previously we had a $100,000 article last year for this project. We've got to the 25% design stage. We're very close to submitting those plans. This will continue us through 100% as Craig discussed. So that'd be $375,000 that we've asked town meeting for. But that's going to equate to three, approximately $3 million. Correct me if I'm wrong, Craig.
3.3, I think.
3.3 million dollars in construction funds that the town will not have to pay for. Today, we're presenting Article Number 20, Transportation Analysis for a couple of different locations. Craig will get into the details of the project.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Yeah, so this is Article 20, Transportation Analysis, Traffic Study for Multiple Locations in Town. We're anticipating these funds will analyze two priority intersections in town, the first being Canton and School Street. This is a high-crash intersection due to poor roadway geometry as School Street and School Avenue approach the intersection from the west. And School Street also intersects from the east, which is obscured by poor sightlines due to a building that's very close to the corner. So there are stop signs on School Street currently. And Canton Street, as it flows north and south, is unrestricted. So speeds tend to get a little quick in that area. This article would have funds to hire a consultant to survey the intersection and prepare design plans for the signalization of the intersection.
Chip in one additional point. This intersection's been on the Mass DOT's top 200 most dangerous intersections for quite a while now. So it is, it's definitely in need of some improvements.
The second priority intersection that we've identified and looked to analyze and prepare design plans for is Pleasant and Lincoln Street. This is another tough intersection in town where cars stopped at Lincoln Street as they tried to cross Pleasant, have a difficult time doing that due to the road with the vertical alignment of the roadway. Cars coming down over the hill are usually going pretty fast on Pleasant Street. And there's some sightline issues at the intersection as well. There's currently two stop signs on Lincoln Street at each approach, which the Public Works Department recently upgraded to the flashing type to sort of help out the situation in the interim. So the requested funds for this article is $125,000. And that will cover the survey and design of those two intersections, hopefully ending up with signalization of both of those intersections. My name is Craig Horstfall, the interim town engineer, here to present to you Article 21, which is the Pine Street and North School Drive Gas Easement. With me is the interim town manager, Mark Tisdale, who was involved with the department up until a few months ago. So he's very familiar with these projects as well. Article 21 will be a zero-cost article to the town. There's no town dollars involved with this. This problem was brought to the engineering department's attention about a year ago when a resident was renovating a dwelling over on Pine Street and did not have access to the gas line, which was out on the, out in the roadway at Pine Street because this parcel was landlocked behind the other two. While they gained access through a driveway between the houses, there was no access available for utility connections. So there was gas available in North School Drive. So we have Pine Street, North School Drive, and the Daw Elementary School. So the gas main that feeds the Daw Elementary School runs up North School Drive, which this resident was hoping to tie into. The school department didn't have any problems with making that connection. We did discover in our investigations through the engineering department that there was no easement defined over the gas company's main line servicing the school. So this article will define that easement and allow access for this homeowner to connect into the line. And at the same time, will define the easement for the gas company should they ever need to service the gas line in the future.
Today, we're presenting Article 22, The Revised Layout of the Tosca Drive Area. If you remember, last year at town meeting, there was an article to survey the Tosca Drive layout and redefine it. That's exactly what we have done. This particular article is to actually accept the revised layout of that, of that area. Craig will get into the explanation of exactly the details on this project.
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, so town meeting article last year approved funding for us to hire a consultant. We put it out to bid and ended up hiring Conoco engineers and scientists to perform a property line survey of Tosca Drive so that we could eventually define and extinguish a portion of the easement, the right-of-way easement that is overlaid onto the land in this area. So Conoco performed their survey and also prepared legal descriptions that will go towards, you know, recording and formalizing the documents so that we can accomplish this. So this is, the area that we're talking about is actually in front of Number 201 Tosca Drive. It's the former area where, when the roadway was first constructed and stopped, the vehicles were turning around in that area. Since the roadway has continued past that point, there's no need for that turning area to remain in place. So we've gone forth and had all the documents prepared, thanks to Conoco engineers and town council, who also helped with preparing these documents.
Tonight, we're presenting Article Number 23. Is that correct, Craig?
Yes.
The Crescent Ridge Sewer Connection. A little bit of history on this, about a year or so, probably over a year or so, Crescent Ridge came to the engineering department and with a hardship. They're bottling plant off of Bay Road, which is this building over here. It's tough to see. It's a little light, the plant's a little light. But this is their building, Crescent Ridge Building, where they do bottling. This is where they sell the ice cream, where people go get ice cream in the summertime. This is Bay Road. And this is Lorraine Drive. So they essentially came over to us and said, you know, we're having issues with our septic system. It's pretty much failing. Based on current Title V standards, we'd have to build a mini wastewater treatment plant, which equates to a lot of money. It could possibly bury the company. They came to our engineering department, to our town, spoke to our selectmen, wondering if it would be possible to connect to a sewer manhole that's located on Lorraine Drive. There's a current manhole there that connects to our municipal sewer system. They went through a series of plans, presentations, and at the end of the day, we came up with a plan that we feel is in the benefit of Crescent Ridge, Sharon, and Stoughton. Essentially, they're keeping the sewer line on their property. The green line is their proposed sewer line, comes across Lorraine Drive in the shortest section possible, across Bay Road, excuse me, to Lorraine Drive and connects into the manhole. We have a draft agreement in the town meeting book that you can review at your pleasure. Some key points of that agreement would be that, you know, there'd be a water meter, some sort of meter, either water or sewer meter installed, that the DPW, our Public Works Department, can monitor the flow of water going to this facility so that we can bill Crescent Ridge like we bill any other resident living in Stoughton. We need town meeting approval. It's the final step to this, this process, to, to agree to this, this connection. After this is done, I'm sure Crescent Ridge will get right on to, to the legal documents of completing this, this connection. Have anything to add, Craig?
Just also that as a part of that legal document, that our system is actually a MWRA sewer system. And as a part of that agreement, Crescent Ridge will be required to remove a portion of INI from our system, which is a benefit to the town. So, and the legal documents are also geared so that there's no burden on the town in the future for oversight of making sure that the system is not clogging up our system, just the administrative costs and so forth. So we're trying to cover all the bases with that.
Just to kind of pick up on what Craig said, the, there's a couple thing, a couple monetary benefits to the town of Stoughton on this. First, as Craig mentioned, we're actually getting an INI, actually an I investigation, inflow investigation performed on our sewer pipes. That's a condition of the permit. It's going to approximately cost $40,000 or more to perform this investigation. They literally have to go through our sewer system and find ways to remove, remove the inflow out of the pipes. For example, a sump pump connecting to a sewer line would be a way to remove inflow from our sewer lines. Another monetary benefit to this is that the town will be receiving some, some INI fees and other types of fees that equate to roughly $50,000 in cost. We believe it's a good project for the town. It's going to have minimal impact to our sewer pipes. And I think it's, it's a, it's a good idea that we'd be a good neighbor and allow Crescent Ridge to connect to our municipal sewer system.
Hello, this is Tim Davis, Recreation Director for the town of Stoughton. I'm here to talk to you about Article 24, and that is the West School Athletic Complex Playground Renovation and Replacement. This article is for $75,000. This is a two-year project, and this article will fund the first year of that project. I would like to add that this is, again, a CPA-funded project that received approval unanimously from the CPC, all CPC members. So $75,000, this would be for the first fiscal year of this project. What this funding will allow us to do is obtain a professional engineer and landscape architectural firm. They will study the grounds and produce a full bid specification package for the project. They will provide us cost estimates of the groundwork that is needed, as well as new playground equipment and installation of that equipment. And more importantly, this will supply us with a construction administration and supervision of the entire project for the two-year period. So this first year, we will, again, we will obtain a firm that will be held on to. This money will provide us them for two years. Why are we doing this project? This project is in response to two main things. First is the current state of the playground. The playground was constructed originally in pieces. The first, the main structure was originally donated years ago by Randolph Savings Bank very generously. And then additional structures were installed at a later time in response to the Head Start School Program that was originally housed at the West School, which no longer is housed there. This has resulted in the equipment being mismatched and not, not suited for the age range and the needs of the West Elementary School. As you can see, parts of the existing structure are decaying. The, the covers are now clear off the surfaces of our platforms and of all of our bridges. And just visually, you can see from far away that the quality and stability of these structures is starting to struggle. However, the second and most noticeable issue we have at that playground, if you have ever been down there during inclement weather, is the drainage issues. In the, the case of any inclement weather, light or heavy, drainage, as you see in these pictures, is a, is a huge problem. It has plagued the playground for a few years now. And as these pictures show, it renders the playground unusable. After a storm, the water easily sits there for two to three days after. I'd like to remind that this playground is the main playground for the West School children. This is their area for recess. And as you can tell, when the rain hits, this area is just unusable. So the children are, are forced to play on the blacktop, and it prevents them to really receive the recreational needs that they require and that they should be offered during their time. The $75,000, again, this may seem high to some people. However, it is because we have this drainage issue. There will be additional work. This will not be an easy tear-down and build-up of the playground. The company that comes in will have to survey the grounds. They will have to dig. They will have to see what is underneath it. So this, this project will be a little more involved than just simply taking down structures and then installing new. And again, I just want to remind that this, this playground is a recreation playground. This is not a school playground. This playground, if you would like to see it, is between the West School and it is between the West School Athletic Complex. That is, again, between the West School, the high school, and then the middle school. This, this complex that we see, that it borders, is home to all high school sports. It is home to stoiac sports, youth groups, private rentals, public rentals, men's leagues, women's leagues, adult leagues, and everything in between. In one year last year, we permitted out over 4,000 hours on this complex. And what that brings us is families from inside our community and outside our community that use this playground and our fields. So we want to be sure that we can offer them a new playground that is safe and that is satisfactory to not only the needs of the school, but the needs of the town and that area of our town. And again, give them a safe space for all to recreate and gather.
Tom Fitzgerald, Stoughton Public Works Superintendent. I'm here to speak about Article 25, INI Inflow and Infiltration. This article, we're asking for $650,000 to support our INI program, which is the reduction of inflow and infiltration into the sewer system. Basically, we'll start with this slide right here. Inflow and infiltration is clean water that's found its way into the sewer lines and is sent on a town to be treated as wastewater. So our goal is to reduce the amount of clean water we're sending out as wastewater. This happens through instances like this, where this pipe is actually leaking at the joints. Groundwater is entering the sewer line and is exiting, being sent to the MWRA to be treated as wastewater. This INI program, we identify these locations, come up with a fix to repair them, and then actually perform the repairs. This is a before and after picture of, this is the exact same pipe we saw before. This is after a pipe lining system, which reduces the inflow. So we have a complete solid pipe that doesn't allow any infiltration into the system. So that's what we're trying to do, is reduce this amount of clean water that we're sending on a town to be treated. That number is around $5 million a year. So this article will help us to identify these locations, come up with a plan to reduce this inflow, and actually fund the construction of this. A unique part of this article is the MWRA has a grant program, a 25-75 grant. So if we put up 25% of the project cost, they'll reimburse 75% of it. So basically, we're spending their, their money to improve our system. This is an ongoing process. It's been, we've been doing this for, I believe, 14 years. We've reduced the amount of INI leaving the system. It's a continuous project that, once we repair this pipe, come back to it 10 years later, it may be leaking again. So we make, we'll fix another repair at that point in time. it may be leaking again, so we'll fix another repair at that point in time. So it's an ongoing battle to constantly reduce the amount of clean water we're sending out and paying for it to be treated.
I'm Paul Jaffoon, Facilities Manager, and I'd like to talk a little bit about Article 26, the Town Hall Cupola and Cornus Painting and Repairs. Many of you have probably noticed the ongoing window and trim repairs at Town Hall and the new color scheme, as you can see right now on the Porter Street site. That being said, as it stands today, that job does not include the repainting and repairs of the cupola and/or the cornus facial service painting. That work was included within the bid for the window project. As you can see here, this is a blown-up shot of some notes on the existing plans for the window project. As you can see, we asked bidders to price the cornus painting and cupola, painting and repairs under alternate one. Alternate one was not awarded as the funding was not available. So that's why we're here now. The Community Preservation Committee has reviewed this application, and they did so on January 10th, and approved to fund this article for $220,000 unanimously. This project is important because the new color scheme and painting of the light gray in the black doors, back to the original colors, as can be seen through a paint analysis done by an architectural historical consultant, that the new color scheme was set up, was formed by that analysis. Without this job, the cupola and the painting and the cornus work would still be the bright green as it is today. So this is kind of the finishing touches to that project.
Hello, my name is James Conlon. I'm the Environmental Affairs Officer of the town of Stoughton. I greatly appreciate your support in voting in favor of Article 27 on the next annual Stoughton Town Meeting. This is a provision to implement mechanical means to extract organic material in our lakes and ponds in the community. We are going to focus on Ames Pond for this particular article. I have some items to show you on the screen. I have a brochure that I will proceed to scroll through very slowly and allow you to see some highlights regarding the merit of hydroraking and mechanical harvesting that is proposed at Ames Pond with respect to the funding requested in Article 27. Hydroraking is essentially a backhoe on a raft, a motorized boat, that is maintained by a gentleman or a woman with their hydraulics license, where they are using, they are employing mechanical devices to extract floating organic matter in Ames Pond, which has been viewed to be accumulating over the past 10 years or so. This is a manifestation of massive organic decomposition that will succeed in evolving the pond into a bog and reducing the depth. We are proceeding to move forward with this hydroraking facet of our multifaceted lake management program in the town. There is information in this brochure that I am advancing for your edification, and I'm about to show you some photographs based on the active implementation of hydroraking at Ames Pond. Hello there, I'm about to show you some photographs of the Ames Pond piloting program concerning hydroraking in 2008. Here is a photograph of the device that is used to extract the organic matter in the pond. It is known as a York rake or an Aqua rake. There is a harvester also in this photograph that's used as a platform to load the organic matter, where at this time, living vegetated matter was extracted, but this round, we are using the hydro rake to extract the organic floating mats in our ponds. You can see the vegetation in the pond, the immense vegetation of the water shield and the water lilies in this photograph that decompose every year at the end of the growing season, and they contribute to an accumulating mass of organic detritus in the pond. Here is a photograph that shows the water lilies, the water shield, and the main primary target, exotic aquatic macrophyte. It's known as kabamba or fanwort. You can see it emerging at the surface of Ames Pond, south of the West Street Causeway. As you can see, if you look at the surface of the water, the outgrowth of the kabamba is at an immense scale, a massive scale. Here is another photograph that shows the hydro rake or the York rake in the background with an immense accumulation of organic matter in Ames Pond. I would like to again remind you that the funding amount for Article 27 is $12,500. Thank you for your assistance. Hello, this is James Conlon, and I'm here to request your support of Article 28 on the Spring Annual Town Meeting warrant. This concerns the townwide lake management program funding in the amount of $35,000. We will proceed to implement, we will proceed to implement a lake management program at Albert's Pond or Town Pond at Pratt's Court. In addition to that, we will continue with follow-up vegetation management at our other most important lakes and ponds in the town of Stoughton, which include all three basins of Ames Pond and also Harris Pond, also known as Pinewood Lake. I have maps to show you of Pinewood Pond at this time. That indicates the pond itself, it's 25 acres. And I have next to show you a map of Albert's Pond, where we are initiating a aquatic weed management program in that pond. The facility is about nine and a half acres, bisected by West Street, in the vicinity of Pratt's Court. I now have photographs to show you of the different ponds in town. There's a photograph of Ames Pond that is indicative of the severe degree of utrification of lake management. We have already initiated a lake management program at Ames Pond, and it's been successful thus far. Here is a map of Ames Pond that shows the aerial of the three basins, where we proposed aquatic, we propose to continue the implementation of the town's lake management program. Here is a photograph of Town Pond near the culvert. Here we have cyanuric bacteria at this point, which is algae in a sense, and is a source of contamination and pollution, which we wish to manage with respect to your support. Here is a condition of utrification of different aquatic macrophytes, including water shield, water lily, variable milfoil, and kabamba, Carolina, kabamba, Carolina, or fanwort. Those are exotic species of vegetation. Herbicide will be applied by means of an airboat, such as this one, with a hopper and a distributor. Here is a photograph of the south basin of Town Pond, excuse me, north basin. Here is the, here is a view facing south of Harris Pond that shows the massive degree of aquatic vegetation growth in the summer of 2016. There is another photograph of the south basin of Albert's Pond from the Causeway on West Street. So there you have it. There are photographs, and there's evidence that are indicative of the need to continue to manage our lakes and ponds in the town of Stoughton. I greatly appreciate your support. I look forward to the vote. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Pat Basler. I'm the Director of the Stoughton Public Library, and I am presenting for Town Meeting this year two articles, Article 29 and Article 30. Article 29 is to expand the current Stoughton Public Library parking lot when the new building opens sometime this fall. The library trustees have requested that we bring this article forward so that when the new building opens, and it's expected to be double the visitors when we first open, as often happens with new buildings, that we will have sufficient parking. And our hope is to be able to do this before the end of the construction project so that there will be less disruption to the public. Back in the summer, early summer of 2017, the project went out to bid for the entire building renovation, and at that time, we included an alternate bid to expand the Park Street parking lot by 20 spaces. The plans you are looking at now shows the rear parking lot redesigned a little bit, but still has about 24 parking spaces, including two handicap spaces. And the front right parking lot on Park Street goes from 23 spaces to 41. It also includes four spaces in front of the buildings, for a total of 65 spots altogether in the new building, when the new building opens. Our hope is that we can get this construction done before we reopen to the public. When the project went out to bid, the alternate bid by M. O'Connor, who took the project, who started the project for us, they gave us an alternate bid price of $457,000, but it had a 180-day cap on the price. That price expired at the end of December, so we have added escalation costs to bring the price up to, I think, $486,000. If this gets approved at Town Meeting, we would be able to potentially move this project forward and get the construction done before the new building opens. We are very excited that the Finance Committee in the town voted to move this article forward, and funding is already available in the Building Stabilization Fund and some funds left over in an article by another department. So that is, I hope you consider this seriously and give us a positive vote if you feel this is a good idea. The second article is Article 30, and we are hoping to raise funds to suppress the utility wires on two telephone poles right directly in front of the building on Park Street. I'll have more information on that at Town Meeting. We're currently negotiating with the four or five companies that carry wires on those utility poles. It is a logistical nightmare to pull all the information together, but this happens to be a time where that part of the, the town is doing a sidewalk project from Lincoln Street all the way down to Sumner on the library side, so that the sidewalk in front of the library on Park Street is slated to be opened sometime, opened and replaced sometime this late summer or fall. So it seemed a good time to at least consider putting these wires underground, or at least laying the conduit for it, so that if in the future the town wants to go that route, we would be ready. When we did the final design of the new library, of course, the architect's renderings were beautiful, but there was no sign of the telephone poles and the utility wires. And it wasn't until halfway through the project, when it started to take shape, that we realized that really is not going to be an attractive look. It's aesthetically, it's an aesthetic issue, it's not really a critical issue, but we do hope that you will consider it. Thank you.
My name is Paul Jaffoon. I'm the Facilities Manager, and I'd like to speak to you about Article 31, Library Utility Service Easement. Many of you have probably seen the library renovation project ongoing. All this article will do, will grant National Grid an easement to their new transformer and pad that it sits on, to work there and to allow their equipment there on the Walnut Street side, back where our garage is, and adjacent to the Walnut Street back parking lot. This, the Board of Selectment granted National Grid a quote-unquote "license" for this, so we could do the work as construction called for. But as we know, an easement must go through Town Meeting, so that's why this article is within the warrant.
Hi, Town Meeting Representatives, I'm Bill Rowe, Town Accountant. I'm going to talk about Article 32, the Public Cable Access. This article deals with a mandate from the state to have either cable public access receipts be, receipts and expenses be recorded in an enterprise fund, or what's recorded, what's known as receipts reserved for appropriation. This is an attempt by the Division of Local Services to create some standardization in the manner in which communities handle the receipts from the cable carriers for public access. We would be opting for the enterprise fund, since the receipts reserved for appropriation will only allow us to appropriate from actual cash on hand, whereas enterprise fund will allow us to appropriate a budget based upon SMAC's cash needs and next year's expected revenues from the cable carriers. Currently, our process is when we receive a check from the carrier, it's payable to the town of Stoughton, we just deposit it into the treasury, and we cut a check back over to SMAC. So the budget for this fund, for this article for 2019 would be $425,000. Now, this article is likely to be dismissed, since there's a bill pending in the State Senate, which would modify the DLS regulation. I'm going to talk a little about Article 33 on the bond premiums. This article deals with premiums on bond sales in accordance with passage of the State Municipal Modernization Act. I'm not a financial analyst, but I'm told that a bond sale will generate a premium if the interest rate coupon rate of each maturity of the bond is greater than the yield to investors of each maturity of the bond. So different market assumptions about future interest rates result in different couponing strategies by underwriters of bonds. So prior to November 7, 2016, bond premiums net of issuance costs would become miscellaneous general fund revenue at the end of the fiscal year, with prorata allocation to enterprise funds permitted. Premiums on bonds and notes sold on or after November 7, 2016 must be either A, applied to the cost of the projects from which derived, and reduce the amount to be borrowed if authorized by a vote of the legislative body, or B, reserved for a future capital project with a similar or longer useful life. We opted to structure the October 2017 bond issue to reduce the amount of bonds issued by the amount of net premium generated. The total amount of the bond proceeds for all projects was $77,330,000 plus a premium of $6,576,327, rather than sell the original approximate $83 million bond advertised for sale. So the bond was restructured, the bond sale was restructured after the bids. So the proposed use of the premium is shown here, the, you see the total at the top, $6,576,327. $5,187,000 is to be applied to the high school. $926,583 would be applied to the library, and the rest of the premium would be generate, would be reserved for future projects, water, general funds, Cedar Hill, and a future exempt project. And the balance of the premium would be used to pay issuance costs, underwriters, credit rating agencies, bond counsel, financial advisor, so forth. So an affirmative vote on this article will allow us to apply on a prorata basis the October 2017 premium received in lieu of selling a like amount of bonds to the high school project and the library project, and this will allow similar allocation on premiums received from future bond issuances. Thank you. I'm going to talk a little about Article 30- I'm going to talk a little about Article 34, the Medicaid reimbursement. Most of you veteran Town Meeting reps are familiar with this. This article was intended to fund a consultant to obtain reimbursement for Medicaid for Chapter 766 students. This is a longstanding article, we usually have it every two or three years, and it's usually a lump sum of $25,000. I expect this article to be dismissed, since FinCom has opted to add an amount for consultant fees to the treasurer's budget to cover these expenses.
I'm Paul Jaffoon, I'm the Facilities Manager, and I'd like to speak to you about Article 37, Lucius Clapp ADA Feasibility Study. We've asked the town to appropriate $30,000 for the study of the ADA compliance and what we can and can't do with the Lucius Clapp building in order to make it accessible to all members of the public. This money would cover the costs of a preliminary design after we understand and are told by the Architectural Access Board what we can and can't do with all aspects of the building.
Donna McNamara, Stoughton Police Chief, offering information on Article 44 for Town Meeting, May 2018. The Stoughton Police Department is requesting a legislative act with approval from Town Meeting to hire special police officers, which are retired Stoughton police officers, to be hired for detail construction work. As a result of the last number of years, we've had difficulty filling details, construction details, and at times have had to shut jobs down that are, impact the construction done in town when we were unable to fill road job details. This has had a negative impact on some jobs that have been done through the DPW, and then private contractors also. Over the last number of years, the number of officers, or the number of jobs that have been out there, is more jobs than there are officers that we've been able to do. This is not unique to the Stoughton Police Department. Many other police departments around our community have turned to this alternative to hire retired officers who have, over the years of their career, been trained in both the law, criminal law, motor vehicle law, first responder skills. And so what we're looking to do is capitalize on the retired officers to come in, work these road jobs, and they're paid through the contractor. And so they only work when they're asked to work. This will be not punitive in any manner to the full-time officers that are currently on the police department. Both the Superior Officers Union and Patrol Officers Union support this. It will be an opportunity to take people that have worked and given their career to public safety for the town of Stoughton, and then they would be given the opportunity to work construction road jobs, one available after the full-time officers have been offered the position. So it is a legislative act that the town manager will submit to the House of Representatives in the Massachusetts Senate, a special act of legislation that would allow members of the Stoughton Police Department to be appointed by the Appointing Authority, special officers for the purposes of permitting traffic details. This article would authorize the town manager to take any other actions related to the successful acceptance of the said special act of legislation to allow retired officers who have retired in good standing to work paid traffic details in the town of Stoughton. Thank you.
Hello, Town Meeting Representatives, Bill Rowe, Town Accountant here. Going to talk about Articles 45, 46, 47, those are the stabilization fund articles. I've got an analysis which shows the current balances. So the general stabilization, we have $4,749,603. The building stabilization, we currently have $3,119,350. And the fire apparatus stabilization fund, we have $75,000, for a total of $7,943,953. The Finance Committee is not proposing to add anything to the general or the fire apparatus stabilization fund. They are proposing to add $264,000 out of free cash to the building stabilization fund. Proposed uses, they're proposing to use $1,816,769.74 out of the building stabilization, $1,400,000 to finance the Article 18, the Town Facilities Article, and $416,769.74 to partially fund the Article 29, the library parking lot article.
Hi, my name is Noreen Eltul, your Stoughton Town Planner, and I'd like to introduce Building Commissioner Tom McGrath. Tom and I will be presenting four articles this evening, or this afternoon, whenever you may be watching this. Two articles deal totally with the downtown Stoughton Center Mixed Use Overlay District, and the other two articles deal with accessory structures and side yard setback requirements in the zoning district of RU, which is a residential urban district. What I'd like to do now is just do just a, just a little presentation on what zoning is, for all you folks that may be unaware. Zoning is the way that governments control the physical development of land and the kinds of uses to which each individual property may be placed. And what does zoning laws do? What do we regulate? Besides restricting uses that can be made of land and buildings, zonings regulate dimensional requirements. And this evening, we actually have two articles that deal with dimensional requirements for lots and buildings on properties located within a certain district of the town. It can deal with the density of the developments, whether you can have animals there, it can deal with natural resources, it can deal with a lot of other issues. And who controls the zoning? Actually, in a town, it really goes through the planning board. That is our job, to kind of see what the temperature of the town is and its land use, and where we would like to go, what our vision is. I would like to just explain to you how Massachusetts is a home rule state, meaning the cities and the towns have broad discretion in enacting ordinances and bylaws, including, including ordinances and bylaws to govern their affairs. The second article of the amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution as amended by the 89th article of the amendment, is the Home Rule Amendment, provides that Section 6, any city or town may, through adoption or amendment or repeal a local ordinance or bylaws in exercise power of function, which the general court has the power to confer upon, which is not consistent with the Constitution's laws enacted by the court. This provision grants cities and towns considerable latitude in adopting zoning regulations to govern. Zoning bylaw amendments enacted by towns must be submitted to the Attorney General's Office for review and approval before they become effective, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 32. The Attorney General has 90 days to review a zoning bylaw amendment. The Attorney General's Office has been so busy that they often seek permission from towns to extend that review period. The Attorney General's ruling on amendments when issued provides the town with guidance as to the legality of the zoning bylaws. We, as a town, have submitted various bylaws to the Attorney General's Office with success. How this works is, I, the Town Planner, I fill out a Form 7, and that is submitted to the Attorney General's Office, and all of the information that we have done through our public hearing process is vetted, and then they review it for legality, and they have 90 days in which to give back to the Planning Board. So tonight, I want to move on to the, to the zoning bylaws. We have, this evening, we have four bylaws. We have Article 48, 49, Article 50, and 51. Tom McGrath, the Building Inspector, he will be dealing with Article 48 and 51, and I will be dealing with the downtown articles on the Stoughton Center Mixed Overlay District, which are Articles 49 and 50. So I want to begin with Article 48, which is accessory uses, and that would be Tom McGrath, the Building Commissioner.
Thanks, Noreen. Hi. So of the two articles, the first one that's on the agenda, Article 48, is a regulation that would limit the size of accessory structures. An accessory structure is something like a detached garage, a storage shed, in some cases, it could be a chicken coop, if there was also a special permit granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Currently, the, the limit on the size of an accessory structure in Stoughton is much more permissive than, than most of the cities and towns in this area. And in fact, in the last several years, I have permitted construction of accessory structures that are actually larger than the primary structure, the house which the accessory structure sits on. And I felt that, having seen that, that that, that really required a look at whether we should, whether we should change, change the rules. And the, with my input and the land use attorney that we use and the Planning Board, we've come up with an amendment that basically says the, for a, an accessory structure that meets all of the existing limits of the zoning code, which basically are that it needs to be located at least five feet setback from the side and rear property lines, at least 10 feet from the principal structure, and can't occupy more than 25% of the required rear yard. That remains the same. But if you're also 900 square feet or less, and one and a half stories or less, I can issue that permit as of right. If you want to build a 900-square-foot, an accessory structure larger than 900 square feet, you need a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And what that means is that there will be a public hearing, a butters will be notified, there'll be a hearing, and the applicant needs to demonstrate to the zoning board that this larger accessory structure will be no more detrimental to the neighborhood than the, than the existing. And basically, what it means is that the zoning board will be, will, will have the discretion of setting some kind of limits on, you know, landscaping, you know, they might make suggestions of building materials and whatnot. So it's not to, it's not to totally restrict the ability of someone to build a large accessory structure, and certainly in neighborhoods where the lots are very large, and one of these structures can be located five feet away from the side and rear property lines, and still be very far away from an adjoining dwelling, I would imagine the Zoning Board of Appeal is going to look very favorable on the special permit, and perhaps less so on a, on a smaller lot. So that's essentially what it is. And the, at the Town Meeting, there will be presented the, the, the actual language of the existing ordinance, and how, how the new amendment would change that. That's Article 48. Article 51 is an article that addresses the side yard setback of certain lots. And the genesis of this particular article was a case that the Zoning Board heard fairly recently. It was a homeowner who had a house on a relatively small lot, I believe he only had 75 feet of frontage, and he wanted to build an attached garage that had a master bedroom on the second floor, that would be attached to the existing dwelling. And to put it on the side where it made the most sense with the plan of the existing house, and where the driveway was, an addition that included a two-car garage, which, a sensible two-car garage would be at least 24 feet wide. This particular applicant had a, had very attractive design, came to, you know, came to my office, I encouraged him to apply for that permit, and apply for a variance to the Board of Appeal for a reduction in the, in the side yard setback. In the particular, he was in the RU zone, which we're, which with this article would apply to. The required side yard setback is 15 feet. His design showed that he would have a setback of about eight feet. And he came to the public hearing, many, several of his neighbors came to the, to the public hearing, there was a letter read with the support, nobody was against this, everybody, including the Board of Appeal, thought it was a great idea, and that we should encourage this kind of redevelopment and enlargement of residential properties. But in fact, the, to get a variance from the, from the, from the zoning code is a, by law, is a very difficult step. Basically, one has to prove that there's a hardship, and this is not an economic hardship, but a hardship that comes somehow from characteristics of the land, either the topography or the the shape of the lot, that, that the lot would, is unique in its area, and there's no way that it can meet the uniform requirements of the neighborhood at large. And in fact, there wasn't really anything unique about this particular lot at all, in the general area, all the lots were 75 feet wide. And the zoning board, although they wanted, they wanted to grant the homeowner the ability to do this particular project, realized that they, they had to deny, they had to deny the variance. As a result of that, we came up with a, a suggested remedy, which Article 51 is, and that is, in certain neighborhoods, and we're talking about the RU zone, which is highlighted on that map in yellow, and if I can enlarge it here, you'll see that it's, the, the red square is pretty much around the town center, and the yellow area, which is the RU zone, RU stands for Residence Urban. But it's basically, it's the lots in the periphery of the downtown, most of them are older lots that were developed long before zoning went in, and the lots are small. And with this, this article would allow the Zoning Board the discretion to allow a 50% reduction in the required side yard setback as a special permit. So similarly to the accessory structure, if an applicant couldn't meet the 15-foot setback, he could come to the Zoning Board, present at a public hearing, present his design, persuade the Zoning Board that it really was no more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, and the Zoning Board could grant him the special permit, which then would allow me to grant him the building permit to do that. So that's it in a nutshell. If anybody would like to ask, obviously, we can't have a question and answer right here, but if anybody would want to address questions to me by email, tmcgrath@stoughton-ma.gov, I'd be happy to answer them. Thanks a lot.
For demonstration purposes, this area here, that is outlined, not the square itself, this area in the middle there, that is the Stoughton Center Mixed Use Overlay District. And the next two articles, I will be doing Article 49 and Article 50, and both of those articles deal with this outlined area, which I hope you can see here. It's a dark blue, and inside, it's a purple, and the reason it's two colors is we have a, an area A and an area B in the schmood. And Article number 49, it's dealing with setbacks in yard requirements for buildings, and this is hard to envision. I think you just have to envision the buildings down there, and the density. What we're, what we try to do on our committee, which, you know, Tom referred to, was the Building Commissioner, myself, Planning Board, our land use attorney, Mark Bobrowski, what we try to do on this is make, is make a bylaw that was better for the development of our downtown. We have a lot of vacancies, and we want to start, really, we've been trying to attract developers in, but some of, some of our requirements are so stringent... developers in, but some of our requirements are so stringent that it's been difficult. And everybody knows where the schmood was, and that's one of our developments that has been more or less held up. So in Article forty-nine, Article forty-nine refers with the minimum yard depth, and it is currently ten feet.
Rear yard.
The rear yard depth, ten feet, the building. And what we would like to see that, we'd like to see that at a zero foot, except where that property might share, you know, with a residential house or within a residential district. And at the end of this, we'd also like to see, in the schmood, it was twenty-five feet, and we'd like to change it to ten feet. Any property that shares the line, so it was twenty-five, and we would like to change that to ten. So this article basically just deals with your minimum yard.
Rear yard.
Rear yard requirement. Okay, so it's just the rear of the building. Okay, so ten to zero, and if it shares a line with a residential structure, from twenty-five to ten feet. And what that does is that makes for a better development in the downtown, because our buildings are attached to each other, and it's really hard to meet these requirements within the Stoughton Center Mixed Use Overlay District. And Article fifty deals with the, to increase the radius for the distance for off-site motor vehicle parking. Right now, if you can envision the schmood, from there, five hundred feet, what it was originally, and being changed to fifteen hundred feet in which to park your car. Right now, the existing project is four spaces that they need to meet the requirement of the schmood in the special permit. So they've put a lot of, quite a bit of parking on the site, because they actually took off a level. They were originally twenty-one units, and now they're down to fourteen, but they're still four spaces short, and they were not able to secure four spaces within the five hundred feet. But this is the example I'm using, because this is the project that's been around for so many years. But this is not going to just apply for one project, it's going to apply for all of the projects in the downtown. So what this is, is a change from a walking distance of five hundred feet to fifteen hundred feet. And when I say walking distance, that means that you would walk the sidewalk and go to the crosswalks. So it's going to be within that fifteen hundred feet of a walking distance for the off-street parking. So this bylaw is under special parking provisions, and is for off-site motor vehicle parking. And the reason I just emphasize the walking is, it's your walking from your vehicle that distance.
It's not as the crow flies.
Right.
One would actually have to walk.
Have to walk the fifteen hundred feet. So I think that, you know, to go back to Tom's last article, you know, it's not uncommon to find zoning rules that might be different in other districts, you know? So that's why, you know, that's what zoning is about. The zoning is about change, and zoning is about making things better in the town. And that's why Chairman of the Planning Board, Joseph Scardino, Tom McGrath, myself, Noreen O'Toole, Mark Bobrowski, we worked on articles, and we have been for the last couple of years, and have held, you know, many, two zoning forums. Our public hearing for these articles was on April ninth, and whatever comments we got, we implemented into our articles, whatever the public thought made sense. So there's a lot of community engagement, and I think that if you have any questions, ask Tom, give you his email, mine is n o t o o l e at stoughton-ma.gov. So if anyone wants to email us, that would be great, because that helps us also. And thank you so much.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, those watching this presentation of SMAC. My name is Joseph Scardino, and I'm Chairman of the Planning Board for the Town of Stoughton. And I'm here to discuss Article fifty-four, which essentially allows the Planning Board to issue a special permit when a Stoughton Center Mixed Use Overlay applicant, that is the acronym for schmood, as you'll hear, as you've heard many other speakers refer to it, to issue a special permit when a schmood applicant cannot satisfy the over eleven pages of requirements contained in the Stoughton Center Mixed Use Overlay District bylaw. Why did the Planning Board submit the article in this fashion? We did so because we were uncertain with the composition of the Board of Selectmen, and therefore wanted you, the voters of the Town of Stoughton, to have a chance and an opportunity to hear this article on town meeting floor. This article represents the highest priority of the Planning Board with respect to the Stoughton Center Mixed Use Overlay District. This article has been supported unanimously by members of the Planning Board, and this article is based on observations of the Planning Board over the past ten years, with various projects attempting to be built and passed by us, and the zoning challenges that they have faced in the process. The Planning Board has been aware of the lack of the development of the square, and has brought zoning articles every single annual town meeting, including some of the special town meetings, to encourage development of the square. This article would have been heard last spring if we had had a special town meeting. The Planning Board is the official legislative body with respect to zoning bylaws pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law Chapter Forty-A. We have brought you many zoning articles over the past several years, the most prominent of which was the recodification of the zoning bylaw, which took place in November eighteenth of 2015 during a special town meeting. That particular process completely revised the entire zoning for the Town of Stoughton. But as the previous speaker, our Town Planner, has mentioned, zoning is an embryonic and constantly changing process. When a project comes in, we have an opportunity to see how well the statute works in practice, and I'm sure you share my concerns that the turnover of buildings in the square hasn't been as pervasive as it has been, for example, on Lower Washington Street. You can't discuss Article fifty-four without looking at Articles forty-nine and fifty. The best way to characterize those are they're a Band-Aid. They deal with very specific issues within the Stoughton Center Mixed Use Overlay District, but there are many, many issues that these bylaws forty-nine and fifty do not address. Again, we characterize them as a Band-Aid, and not as a panacea for the problems in the square. Article fifty-four addresses all of these and many more issues. For example, the open space requirement, which required three revisions of the Malcolm Parsons Project just to be able to go further in the hearing process. The Article fifty-four allows the Planning Board to grant a special permit, and the special permit would take the form of waivers to the Stoughton Center Mixed Use Overlay bylaw, which, as I said, is about eleven pages with dozens and dozens and dozens of requirements, not just the ones addressed in forty-nine and fifty. But the special permit is not a fiat with no restrictions. The bylaw criteria, and the current bylaw for a special permit, require the Planning Board to look at the following factors: suitability, impact on infrastructure, impact on traffic and pedestrian safety, pedestrian access to the facility, impact on the visual characteristics of the square, the adequacies of utilities, the impact on existing businesses, and the future road alignment. It is not unfettered discretion. It's subject to reviewable standards. Articles forty-nine and fifty, as well as many other requirements, can be accomplished by passing fifty-four, Article fifty-four, whereas the reverse is not true. Passing forty-nine and fifty still leaves substantial holes in the ability of the Planning Board to approve these projects that have had difficulty fitting within the parameters of the bylaw. Furthermore, by passing fifty-four, we can preserve the standards that can be used to keep out projects. So if you put a standard such as fifteen hundred feet for off-site parking, it means that if an applicant can meet it, it's automatic, we have to grant their project. Whereas if it's a project that's detrimental to the town, after going through all those factors, we do not have to grant that particular project, but we would have to if fifty, for example, was passed and the off-site parking was extended to fifteen hundred square feet. Also, Article fifty is impractical. The distance is much too great for the average person to be able to walk almost more than a quarter of a mile in inclement weather in order to park their car and proceed to their dwelling. In addition, it's impractical because the lack of parking opportunities by private holders of private parking. It works well in a big city where you have lots of private parking lots, but not in downtown Stoughton, where most of the parking, frankly, is public. The MBTA parking lot, there isn't too many choices for private parking. And so the applicant would have to have an agreement with, for example, the MBTA, and that wouldn't be handled on a quick and expeditious fashion. It would be better in a situation through the special permit process to let the Planning Board go through the special permit criteria and grant a waiver with conditions. For example, the applicant could be charged with the obligation to add landscaping in the square and other locations. It could be required to contribute some funds to a parking program that would provide for signage and parking monitoring in the square, all at the expense of the applicant and not at the expense of the Stoughton taxpayers. The Planning Board has already undergone this particular approach in a lot of the commercial developments. We've brought you electric charging stations without cost to the town. We've added two welcome signs, both at the North Stoughton entrance, at the Route Twenty-four exit, and at the Route Twenty-seven entrance at Cobb's Corner, again, at the cost of the applicant and not at the cost of the taxpayers. We have also enhanced the landscaping tremendously along the corridor of Washington Street from Monk to the Canton border. I think you'll all agree that that area looks a lot better than it did five or ten years ago. While the projects may not be the ones that you might, in an ideal world, select for that area, each of those projects is a lot more aesthetically pleasing and a lot better landscaped than what you would find if we hadn't been able to do, to have the discretion in order to enhance these projects with amenities that are not at taxpayer expense. And so in closing, I would like to ask you to give the Planning Board what it needs in order to jumpstart development in the square, and please vote at town meeting to pass Article fifty-four. Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Again, Mark Tisdale, the Intern Town Manager. We want to thank you for tuning into this video. We welcome you to come to the town meeting that starts on May seventh at the High School Auditorium. I welcome any comments you may have on this video. If you have any questions, please reach out to me through the town website. Have a good night. Thank you.